The Newton zoning board of adjustment public meeting is called the holder at seven oh one P F. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business will be the twenty twenty five.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, would you like?
Would you like to seat Ms. Riordan for Mister Gibbs?
Ah, yes.
And Mister Russell for Mister Kozak.
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
Okay, so our first order of business is the twenty twenty five meeting schedule. Everybody had a chance to look that over?
Yeah, I have big problems.
Okay, I was waiting.
Well, first, well, first off, a little problem is the very last line.
Yes.
It's not, the, the meeting wouldn't be scheduled for Friday, January third, twenty twenty five, it would be Wednesday, January seventh, twenty twenty six.
I don't follow.
That's a little problem. The much bigger problem is at the conference, we're talking about how, how public hearings must be scheduled.
Okay.
You have forty-five days from the application. And though our rules say an application has to be complete and the money has to be in, we don't have legal authority to say that.
So it's really problematic.
They, they start when they drop it on his desk. Even if they don't give him the money, it's the, the clock starts. If they don't give him the money, then we can deny without a public hearing if they don't pay, if they don't pay for the notice for the public hearing. But the clock starts the, the day that they drop something off.
So if we have a, if we have a preliminary and then a public, we're already at thirty, thirty days.
No, no.
Well.
Let, let's say that tomorrow he's open, someone comes in and drops them application on the, but. We would have to have a public hearing, the public hearing by, uh, let's see, I don't have that one. Yeah.
It would have to be January, by January.
Within two weeks.
Middle of January.
Yeah.
The, the public hearing.
The public hearing, right.
Right, not, not the preliminary.
Not the preliminary.
Right.
So we don't, ba- basically with the schedule the way it is now, i- if, if someone comes in with something on the deadline, we're legal. Cause there's still, but, but we're, we're, basically with this schedule, we're legal about three days a month. So, so we basically need to do two things. We, we need to update our rules of procedure to, to indicate that, 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 that time is short.
Applications are only accepted on these days during the month?
No.
No.
No, we, we can't do that either.
We can't do that.
Because they, basically, technically, they can drop an application off with the town clerk. It's the town receives it, it doesn't even have to be a day that Jim's open.
That's very interesting.
We discussed this at the conference, I went through the past two years worth of them. We have never recei- we have, all of our applications have come in on the deadline day. So technically, we have always been good, however, you have to remember, you can only have one preliminary hearing. If, if you go by that schedule, if you drop off an application on the deadline day, and usually I push people to, cause a lot of them I, I work with. I go, yeah, bring it in next Thursday. That's the deadline day. That allows you to have a preliminary hearing and schedule for a public hearing. And still meet the forty-five days. Once you hit the public hearing, you can continue forever.
No.
Well.
You get ninety days from the day of drop.
Or just, you have ninety days if you can't make up a decision in ninety days.
Well, that's only two months, because you've al- you've already killed month and a half.
Right.
Before the public hearing.
Oh, my interpretation was it was ninety days from the first public hearing.
No, no, it's ninety days from the application.
Okay, okay, I'll have to re-.
But, but I mean, tha- that's less of a problem, cause usually at that point, you get into negotiation with the applicant.
Right.
If there's some reason why we can't make a decision and they're here, uh, then we, we either ask them to, to continue or, or we deny for lack of information. So, so usually when an applicant is faced with that choice, they, they, they will agree to a continuance. And as long as the applicant agrees, we can continue.
Okay.
As, as long as it takes to get the information. So that, that's not the problem, but, but the, the problem is the way we're set up is, uh, other, other than for the very few days before the, the deadline, we're, we're, we're not legal.
Mister Chair, this is Barbara, could I, could I say something?
Please.
Has the, has the board ever thought about having two meetings a month instead of one every two weeks? And that would eliminate this problem?
I think it's. I don't think it's a terrible idea, I think it's the most logical idea. I think that if we do schedule it for every two weeks, and we don't have a reason to meet every two weeks, we can always.
Or, or, or we do it the other way around. We, we, we schedule for once a month, but even those, if something comes up and there isn't time to, to go a whole month between the preliminary, to schedule something in between, that would, but, now, how long does it take from the time we say we want to have a public hearing? How, how quickly could we have one and get all the notices out?
Six, sixteen days. That's for.
But we're also talking, we would, the clock would start ticking so we could have a preliminary. In theory, we could have a preliminary hearing prior to, two weeks before a public hearing.
You, you could, if, depending upon when the application comes in, you could do it either way. You could, you could do it, have the preliminary with the understanding that we may have to come in midway the next month. If, if the dates all work, and, and look at that, it. Jim usually, he's, he, he, he works with most of them and they, so, so we don't usually end up with things coming in at a time when it would cause us a problem. I'm just concerned that it could.
Right, I don't disagree, and I think it's definitely gonna be a little bit more, if we, if we go. So here's my thoughts on both proposals. If we go with Ms. White's proposal, we're covered and we know what's going on, and we can always forego the week before if we have to. If we go with yours, then we're, it might, which I, I also like, but I feel like that puts a lot on Jim to do some math and crunch some numbers with his already, you know.
Well, e- e- either way, he's gonna have to do the math and crunch the numbers.
I, I, I can do it for two meetings a month, um. I will have to find out who is scheduled, what meetings are scheduled, because, great ask. Is conservation the third Wednesday of the month?
First, I'm sorry, second.
Second.
So we meet next week.
In that case. I don't have a problem with looking at rec or.
Rec is Mondays typically, rec is Mondays typically.
Rec, oh, okay, they move to Monday, cause they used to be on Wednesday.
Yes.
Um, and just making sure that that second date is clear, with the understanding that if I have no application, fresh application.
Yeah, that, that.
To have to use it.
That, that would probably be the best way to do it too, if, to handle, do, do the preliminaries on the off week if, if we had to.
Yeah, I have no, I have no problem, and you will have to rewrite.
Rules of procedure.
Your bylaws. Technically, on it, planning board, I have no problem, I get to set up public hearings. Because the planning board authorized me to. The Z B A would have to do the same thing in their bylaws to authorize the, otherwise, you have, that's why I've always made you guys have a motion to take something to a public hearing.
Yeah, that, I, I think that, that makes sense, eh, no matter what we do, it makes sense that you should be able to, uh.
I'd like to.
Lift the public hearing on a date that's scheduled, and, and the more I hear and think about it, the idea of putting it on the calendar makes more sense, that, that, then, if we need the room, we've already got it sealed up, and if we don't need the room, it stays empty.
Yeah. I, I'd like to make a motion to put the bylaws on the agenda to, for next meeting. In order to have Jim have a little bit more control over the meeting schedule.
Could I, uh?
Yes.
Alpen, uh, amend that slightly.
Absolutely.
So, so authorize Jim to draft proposed changes that, that we would discuss at the next meeting.
Yes, that's the way I was going, that's what I was looking for, Roger, thank you, I was getting it.
May I, uh, so I agree, however, um, where does this put Jim with payroll between two departments? I know when he first, when we first hired him for this job, we were told by the selectmen a certain amount of hours. Now we're gonna add another meeting night, that's gonna affect him.
May affect him.
Eh, 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 it's from the reality of it.
May, you're right, may.
From, from the reality of it, we shouldn't have a lot of extra meetings.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, thank you, Roger.
So, I think, I think.
I'm not looking for extra meetings.
Right, no, I'm just worried about him and the preparation, the posting, blah, blah, blah.
To, to address. To, to. To, to address that, I'm gonna simply say, we're doing it to comply with law, so we just should probably.
Oh, I get that.
Get it on the agenda for the selectmen.
That's where I was gonna go.
And then, who would be? I would, I would assume that Jack would bring it, or would you all bring it?
Not me, I'm not anybody.
I presented the budget and tried to explain to, to people without. As an attorney that I know and like, looked at me when I, I told the dilemma, he said, ask somebody else to give you the list of which state laws that you, that the town wants you not to follow in order to, to stay within a certain number of hours per week.
So, I, I'll reach out to. Between Jim and I, we'll get together and reach out and get, try to get that on for the selectmen meeting.
Yeah, we just, I think we have to cover all the bases.
Right, and.
Because even if you don't have a meeting, I mean, I know as the conservation secretary, you know, there's prep, there's posting, there's things that you have to do to get ready for it, even if then we say, hey, we've got nothing in front of us, we can cancel. All that is time.
And, and I think, I think it's, I completely agree with you, and I think it's kind of a, a light lift of like, hey, we're only doing this to, I don't think any one of us wants to be here twice a month.
Right.
You know, if we don't have to, so I think.
That's why, that's the planning.
It's all about the points.
Right, but I do like the idea, like Roger said, um, at least having the, the days.
Yeah.
The meeting dates, so that we all can plan for that.
Right.
Because if we don't do that, and all of a sudden we have a meeting that we've gotta call, we may not end up with a quorum, and that will foul us up as well.
Agreed. So, I think.
Actually, actually, that would be worse.
Right.
So I think Ms. White's recommendation to.
Can I just?
Yeah, absolutely.
Rick, should I understand this, so if we do this, if we change our schedule here, this piece of paper to do two, uh, a, a month, does that mean that Jim has to actually post that second one, whether we have it or not?
No, if we're not having a meeting, he doesn't post a meeting, the only post meetings that we're gonna have. And, and the chair can, uh.
Can decide, can cancel a meeting.
Can cancel a meeting if there's no.
Okay, so it's not the fact that, that you're gonna, this usually goes up on the website so people know when we're meeting?
I would think you'd have to post it all, I know I do.
But I legally have to post the meeting dates.
Yes.
That schedule gets put downstairs.
Yes.
We do, yeah.
For a deadline.
So that, that will have to get posted with, so this will have to be altered in, uh.
Yes, right, so this will be posted downstairs on the website.
Correct.
Does that mean you have to put a notice in the paper twice a week? Okay, cause that would be twice as much of an expense that we probably didn't put in our budget.
No, the changes to the rules of procedure, the, they do not require that I post that in the newspaper anymore.
Oh, okay, right.
That, that, that was, that says it's all up there, all locked.
Yep.
We don't even have to have a public hearing, we only have to, we, we can basically put it on as an agenda item to, to, to amend the rules, and at a regular meeting, we can amend the rules.
Yes, correct. So let's, let's go with the.
So that, that's actually not gonna change until February, but in the meantime, I will redo the, the schedule so that if we meet first, sorry, you meet first and third Wednesdays of the month. Everybody knows that most likely the third Wednesday of the month probably won't happen. I'm going to leave the, I believe on your, the calendars that you have, it has a deadline for applications.
That was my next question, yep.
Well, we now would have to.
I would suggest that you leave that in place and not move it so that there's a, there's.
Each month has a definitive.
A second.
It has two deadlines.
Right.
Okay.
That keeps everything sort of flowing along well, reduces the number of times that you'll have to have that second meeting.
Right.
But you've got the second meeting, meeting already booked out, all booked, there's, you know, once it's on the list that's downstairs, all I have to do is publish, or I go downstairs every week just about with a, a agenda that looks on this slide here, um, and po- and post that. That's not a problem.
Now, if. So basically, if the application comes in close to the deadlines on your paper, then this schedule as is works.
Right.
If a, uh, application comes in very early in the month, then we would need to.
Have the second meeting because the first meeting.
But, and that would sort of have to be that extra meeting.
Right.
Right.
Right, like, we would, the extra meeting would be the preliminary.
Right. Correct.
Because from what you're saying, we don't have enough, if, if we're short on time, there isn't enough time between the first Wednesday and the third Wednesday to have a public, we, we can't look at something on the first Wednesday and have a public hearing on the third Wednesday, cause you don't have enough time to.
Exactly.
Right.
Why does it take sixteen days?
Well, it, it isn't.
We only, cause it, it, it's five days for the.
And I thought they changed that to ten.
If, if, if it was the newspaper and it's, and it's five days for the abuders.
And, well, then we have to change your rules of procedure, cause your rules of procedure say ten.
Well, that's easy.
Okay.
That, 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 that's part of what you're lost with.
I, I was just gonna say, if you wanna retain the ten day, then, because we meet, you meet on a Wednesday, I would have to replace the ad Monday for one in two weeks. But if you go, if, if you reduce it to the five, the five day statute order.
Right.
It makes it actually a lot easier.
But it's so tender, it's not.
Couldn't you just have a schedule that would show all of these dates? And it would also show in-between dates in a different color format, or say, for example, to make it easy for people to understand? That would basically show that basically the ones that are in red are optional, necessary.
What I will do is like the planning board, each line will be one month, and it will actually have four blocks, and it'll have the first meeting of the month and the deadline date.
Yep.
And then a potential second meeting for, in the month.
Okay.
With the planning board, that also has a deadline date.
Okay.
Because the deadline date is also, sorry, it is, there's a, at the top, it says with the deadline, is it noon on a certain date? And any paperwork that anybody wants to give to the planning board has to be in by the Thurs- noon of the Thursday prior to the planning board meeting.
Okay.
I would put that kind of a disclaimer at the top of your schedule.
Okay.
So your schedule will look a lot more like the planning board's schedule, but each line will be one month with two meetings. Yours will only have one deadline.
And, and our rules of procedure?
Yes.
Say five days. We fixed it.
Oh, okay.
It, 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 yeah, there was amended to nine, seven, twenty-two, it says five days.
Okay.
I thought I had read this.
I've got the term day stuck in my head for so many years. Okay, that, that actually, that, that makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
So, so then there is enough time between the first.
Yes.
The, 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 the first Wednesday and the third Wednesday, there's enough time for you to get, get it in the newspaper and get it to the abuders.
Right. Okay, in that case, I will redo, and I haven't, and I apologize, Ms. Riordan, I haven't re- I haven't moved the January one to the second, because I wasn't thinking, I was thinking I was gonna be able to look at you guys and say, happy new year. You're not having, have a meeting, so I won't mess up the calendar.
No, I, I.
But you will now have to meet on January, Thursday, January second, at seven o'clock.
Or we can just use our second meeting of the month.
Right, right.
It's, the whole evening can be rules of procedure, cause I managed to clear everything else, tonight you're gonna clear everything else. So, the January second will be board business, and that will be the twenty twenty-five schedule, rules of procedure, and minutes.
Does that work for everybody?
What, come on the second? I thought that's what we decided in the previous meeting.
What?
I mean, in note.
I thought so too.
That we decided in the previous meeting, we couldn't meet, we weren't gonna meet on January first, we've moved to the second.
Right, sounds like it, I just wanted to make sure everybody's okay with it.
Yep.
Ms. White?
Yes.
That works for you?
Yes, it does, thank you.
So, so where, where do we meet it?
January second.
January second.
Okay.
However, you have a motion on the floor.
For Jim to draft.
For I, Sylvia.
A new schedule as well as new rules and procedures, and present it at next meeting.
Second.
Have we, Mister Hamilton, was that a second? Mister Russell.
Great.
Mister Hamilton.
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Riordan.
Aye.
And Mister Sylvia.
Aye.
But you have.
Uh, one other item that came up at the training was the agendas. We should add a statement that it is subject to change, that the items on the agenda are subject to change.
I like that. I, I also like a new business line at the end of the agenda.
Just to catch all.
Just to have it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's literally, could be thirty seconds every meeting, but anybody having a new business? No, 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 great, I'll do next time.
So you want me to add an alert, um, if you would mind, yes?
Okay. One other item.
One more line here.
I, I, I spent the whole day there, I'd have to get a few notes.
I listen, I'm, I'm, I'm digging it, I'm not gonna lie, I'm digging it, I like digging it, I'm learning this stuff.
One of the things that they talked about was that in those cases where we don't have a full board to hear a case, the applicant.
It has happened once.
Can, can, can request to, that, a continuance until we get a full board.
I remember we gave.
Yeah.
One twenty-five that option one time.
Right, I, I, and I, I think it, it's a, it's a good idea to allow the applicant that opportunity.
So do we have that?
But to do that, we, we, no, we don't, that, that's, that would be another thing to add to the rules of procedure that, uh, an applicant, i- i- if, if there were less than five voting members at the meeting, a- at a public hearing, the applicant could request a continuance until a full board could hear the case.
I'll make a motion to add that to the rules of procedures.
I.
I'll second that.
I will put it together, I will be proud of your, you don't need to make a motion.
Okay, I love it.
There you go.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Okay, Roger, you wanna rule?
What else you got, Roger? I, well, hold on, uh.
Okay, everything else is sorted out.
I was gonna say, anything else related to.
I think some of the stuff we had already done, even.
Oh, yeah.
I know we had done it.
Anything else related to the schedule? Everybody good on the schedule and what we're, and we can move on from that? Okay, let's put that. Uh, we're not gonna adopt that, um, meeting minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes with a couple of changes. On the list of who was here, Mister Russell was not present. And after the public hearing started, Mister Kozak seated Ms. White to.
That one I already got, correct.
Oh, okay, cause, cause you, 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 you have this written, something for two of us.
I was really busy that day.
So that, that, that was Ms. White.
Aye.
Yeah. And considering all the discussion we've had now, even though it's not in the minutes, probably should have been, is there was a whole lot of. yeah, there was a whole lot of discussion about the schedule at the meeting, and there was a, a motion not to, to, to meet on the second.
Right.
I will double check that.
I, I, I honestly... I read the notes and watched the tape at the same time.
I'm jealous of all your free time, Roger.
Hey, I'm retired.
Tried to retire since I was eighteen.
That's a bitter one.
Hell, listen, I graduated high school. What am I gonna do now? I'm gonna retire.
I will go through and double check that. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Reardon.
Aye.
And Mr. Sylvia.
Aye.
Next item is the manifest.
Make a motion to pay a escrow manifest for twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
That was about Ms. McCarthy.
Nope, Mary.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Reardon?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
And, uh, new business.
Merry Christmas to all, and Happy New Year.
Likewise, I'll second.
I'll second, I'll third.
I will adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-three.